Festerson.
Here.
Garnett.
Here.
Jaram.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Here. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Gary Garnett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The spectrum of our invocations has ranged from the simple to the complex over the number of years that I've been here. Today, I'd like to share a few words that's sort of in the middle range as we continue to deal with the local issues. But in full disclosure, I must admit that I had help with this from a higher power. We pray for strength to put away all falsehoods. Let each one of us speak the truth with our neighbors, for we are members one of another. Be angry and do not sin. Don't let the sun go down on your anger and don't give in to those devilish opportunities. Let the thief no longer steal, but rather let him labor, doing honest work so that he may have something to share with anyone in need. Let not any one of us use corrupting talk, but only such as is good for building up as fits the occasion. With that, let us begin our earthly work. Amen.
City Clerk, certified publication on daily record, official newspaper, on August 7th, knows where the council and regular state council meeting, August 11, 2015. A current copy of Meeting's Act is posted in White Binder on the East Wall of the legislative papers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions detract from the decorum of the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices. Before we begin, we had a proclamation. The individuals I see are not here yet, so we will wait until they get here and we'll read it up at that point in time. Also, we would like to congratulate Ms. Cassie Papin on her wedding, recently being married. She's the economic, she's the mayor's chief of staff for economic development. Congratulations and good luck.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. President, if I could, if we could pull up the annexation agenda items, which is 52 through 67, and bring it up at the beginning, I'd appreciate it. We talked about that before.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
That's a motion, I believe.
Yes, that's a motion.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Thompson, you're letting, you've already announced it. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 52 through 67 are moved up. Ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments. Item 52, ordinance to extend the limits of the city of Omaha for certain lands in Douglas County and incorporate the same into and make the same a part of the city of Omaha, located west of 180th Street between F and Q Streets, A is communication opposing and D is documents submitted.
Public hearing, I mean, the public hearing on agenda item was held in last week. Is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
No.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
It, 52 is adopted 4 to 3, or passed 4 to 3. Item 53, ordinance to extend the limits of the city over lands located southwest of 144th and Blondo Streets, Eldorado, SID 206.
Been moved and seconded on item 53. Public hearing was held last week. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
53 is passed 5 to 2. Item 54, ordinance to extend the limits of the city over property located northwest of 150th and Harrison Streets, LeBeau, SID 240.
Public hearing was held last week. Is there a motion? No lights?
No.
Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
54 is passed 5 to 2. Item 55.
6 to 1.
What?
6 to 1.
Oh, Jaram was, which one?
Was it the only number?
Jaram's, oh, Mr. President was yes, I'm sorry. Item 55, ordinance to extend the limits of the city over property located southwest of 180th and Q Streets, rolling meadows and adjacent areas, SID 286.
Public hearing on agenda item number 55 was held. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
No, moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
No.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
55 is passed 4 to 3. 56, ordinance to extend the limits to the city over property located northwest of 144th and Blondo Streets, Nelson Creek, SID 337, and communications opposing.
Begin.
Been moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
56 is passed 5 to 2. Item 57, ordinance to extend the limits, located northeast of 156 and Blondo Streets, Diamond Head, SID 350.
Begin.
Been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
57 is passed 7 to 0. Item 58, ordinance to extend the limits of the city, located west of 156th Street between Blondo Street and West Maple Road, Huntington Park, adjacent areas, SID 374.
Move the approval.
Second.
Item 57 has been, the public hearing was last week. There are no lights, 58, I'm sorry. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
No.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
58 is passed 4 to 3. 59 is ordinance to extend the limits of the city over property located northwest of 204th Street and Cumberland Drive, Skyline Country and adjacent areas, SID 394.
Move the approval.
Item number 59 was, public hearing was last week. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Festerson.
No.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
59 is passed 4 to 3. 60, ordinance to extend the limits of the city over property located northeast of 168th and Harrison Streets, Vinnie Jokes, SID 399.
Public hearing was held, on number, item number 60 was held last week. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
60 is passed 5 to 2. 61, ordinance to extend the limits over property located northeast of 144th and Ford Street, Standing Bear Point, SID 401.
Public hearing on agenda item 61 was held. Is there a motion?
Begin.
Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
61 is passed 7 to 0. Item 62, ordinance to extend the limits to the city, located northwest of 168th and Harrison Streets, Mission Pines, SID 412.
Public hearing on agenda item 62 was held. Is there a motion?
Begin.
Moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
62 is passed 5 to 2. 63, ordinance to extend the limits over property located north of Military Road and 96th Avenue, Northwest Village 2, second addition, SID 430.
Public hearing on 63 was held last week. Is there a motion?
Begin.
No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
63 is passed 5 to 2. 64, ordinance to extend the limits of the city over property located northwest of 144th and Sprague Streets, Hillsborough Point and adjacent areas, SID 432.
Public hearing on number 64 was last week. Is there a motion?
Begin.
Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
64 passed 5 to 2. 65, ordinance to extend the limits, property located northwest of 116th and Harrison Streets, Brookhaven West, SID 435.
Public hearing on agenda item number 65 was held last week. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Been moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
65 is passed 6 to 1. Item 66, ordinance to extend the limits of the city, property located northwest of 108th and Lake Streets, Whispering Hills, SID 460.
Public hearing on agenda item 66 was held last week. Is there a motion?
Begin.
Moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
66 passed 5 to 2. 67, ordinance to extend the limits over property located southwest of 180th and Q Streets, 180th Plaza and adjacent areas, SID 481. We have planning board and planning department recommendation and communications opposing.
Item number 67 was public hearing last week. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
No.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
No.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
67 is passed 4 to 3. Now, we will go back to zoning ordinances on final reading and planning board attachment.
Let's take up, let's bring up the proclamation.
Oh, okay.
We have it here, ma'am.
I'll do it.
Yes, they're here. I think I saw them walk in.
Here they are.
Oh, okay. As I mentioned earlier, we have a proclamation. As most of you know, tomorrow is, is back to school for our OPS students. Number of them are going back to school already, but this is for the Omaha Public Schools. And with us today to, to accept the proclamation is Philip Jackson. He is the executive director of the Black Star Project out of Chicago, Illinois, one of the principal founders of the Million, Million Man March, Take Your Child Back to Work, Back to School Day. And along with him is Willie Hamilton with Black Men United, Willie Barney with the Empowerment Network, Pastor Rolison, and other guests. So, thank you all for being here today. I'd like to read up the proclamation first, make sure that Mr. Hamilton has it for class tomorrow, otherwise, he's gonna probably have to stay after school. But he will, I wanted to read it up and, and give you an opportunity for any remarks you might want to make. First of all, the proclamation reads, "Whereas fathers are our children's first teachers and set the example for academic success and a love of learning, and whereas on the first day of the 2015-2016 school year, families, teachers, and students set goals for achievement and attendance, and whereas research shows children whose fathers are involved in their education earn better grades, get better test scores, and are more likely to graduate from college, and whereas better parenting leads to better students, better schools, and a better community, and whereas Black Men United's mission is to focus black male achievement by enhancing economic, social, educational, and political inclusion in the United States. Now therefore, we the city council, the city of Omaha, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 12, 2015, as Million Fathers' March, Take Your Child to School Day, and witness whereof we have set forth our hand and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 12th day of August, 2015." Congratulations, gentlemen, and...
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I want to thank you on behalf of...
Your name and address.
Hello. My name is Philip Jackson. I'm executive director of the Black Star Project. Flew in this morning from Chicago, Illinois, for this great, great honor. It's an honor because we do the Million Father March in 700 cities. And so, I've been crisscrossing the country, and I've seen the way that the march is being done in Los Angeles, and New York, and Miami, and Houston. And I'm here to tell you that the way that you do the Million Father March in Omaha may be an example for the whole country to follow. It's not, even though it's provided by Black Men United, the Million Father March is for every man, every father, of every race, in every city in this country. And so, what you have done with this proclamation, you have put Omaha to the front of a national movement that has to happen. If America is going to continue to be the great country that we have been and that we need to be, it's going to be because we're doing what you're doing. You're putting fathers into the lives of children. You're putting men into schools, and you're making our communities vibrant by getting families together. So, I just want to thank you on behalf of the Black Star Project for this immense, immense honor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
Y'all gonna fight over it?
My name is Willie Hamilton, 4200 North 30th. Without these guys, that's what this thing is all about, us working in a collective voice to be able to achieve educational growth for our kids. And we know that we can't do it by ourselves. So, I'm excited that my chair, my vice president, Willie Barney, and others seize the benefit. And I want to thank you, Councilman Gray, for really sending a message that men do matter in the educational lives of our children. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this is yours to take, so that you don't have to stay, so that you don't have to stay after school. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you very much. And I will see you in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. There are a couple of lights on. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also just wanted to say thank you for all you're doing, and thank you for coming to Omaha from Chicago. We definitely appreciate the statement that makes as well. And I've been really impressed, not only with what you're gonna do tomorrow, but with all the fathers reading to kids at Howard Kennedy School. My alma mater there. I was there reading to kids not too long ago, and I was really impressed by how many dads were in the school and participating. I think that sends a really, a really great message as well. And I was telling Councilman Gray earlier, I plan to walk my kids to school tomorrow too, but now that we're entering middle school, I'm not sure she'll want me to. But I'm going to anyway. Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Milton.
Just one more thing.
Before you guys leave.
Yeah, before you guys...
Mr. Hamilton, before you guys leave, a couple of folks want to make some remarks.
As the only mother on the city council, on behalf of all the mothers in the city of Omaha, I want to thank all of you for what you're doing, because children absolutely need their fathers. And, and I want to thank you, because mothers can't do it without you, and this is wonderful. It takes, it takes two. So, to all the fathers, and all the grandfathers, and all the uncles who sometimes fill those roles, I want to thank all of you for what you're doing for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
Yes, just a special thanks to all the black men who are stepping up. This is exactly what, what we need. Women can only do so much. Men have to step in and do their part. And I am very proud of Willie. Willie, you've, you've seen the vision a long time ago when others didn't, and you didn't always try to jump out in the limelight either. You did it behind the scenes, and then every once in a while, you were in the limelight, but nobody, you never asked to be. It was, you know, the kids and the parents saying, "Well, what about, what about that Willie, you know, Hamilton guy?" Thank you for being a great role model, and thank you for reaching out to the most vulnerable of our population, who will in turn be the most, they will be the ones that will, will end up saving our, our race. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. This brings back memories, having spent 30-plus years as a school administrator. I do understand, because I've seen it for real, the involvement of men in the lives, or, or a male in the lives of children, it makes a difference. And what you're doing is, if we're gonna turn society around and our lives around, what you're doing and what you're promoting, that's the step, and you know that. I'm talking to the choir right now. But again, I thank you, not only as a person today, but as a past school administrator, of all the help that I did receive from the males that helped with those children. Thank you.
And I will keep my comments brief, and I'm going to save most of them for tomorrow, otherwise, I may have to stay after school as well. So, we'll, we will see you first thing in the morning, but thank you all for all that you do.
No, thank you, guys. Amen alight.
Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments. Item 5 and 6 are one case. 5 is ordinance to amend the land use element of the master plan to change the future land designation to include property within the existing mixed-use area for property located south of 63rd Street and West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 6 is resolution to preliminary platting titled Exarban Village South is hereby accepted. The preparation and final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number 5 and 6 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Mike Wees. I'm with Novel Companies. We are representing Exarban Future Trust, which is the parent corporation of 6300 Arbor, which is the applicant for this subdivision plat. In conjunction with the UNO Arena Project, in 2013 and 2014, the city, UNO, and Exarban Future Trust entered into a series of agreements regarding and related to the arena project. And as a part of these, Exarban Future Trust committed to acquire the former mobile home park that was located on this property, and adjacent buildings east of 64th Street and south of Castalar. And this area totals about eight acres. Future Trust agreed at that time to make available to the university the approximately west three acres of this site for UNO Arena parking, and to offer the balance of the site for redevelopment. This plat vacates the existing Castalar Street right-of-way on the north of this property to orient you. 64th Street is on the west. The arena is immediately west of there. west of there. Center Street is just off the map, one block to the north. And newly-constructed Arbor Street borders the property on the south. And this plat vacates the existing unimproved Castalar Street right-of-way and subdivides the property into the two parcels, the one to be used by the university for parking and the one that's to be offered as redevelopment site. As a part of this plating, the Exarban Village Mixed Use Zoning Agreement, which is the zoning that is on Exarban Village north of Center Street, will be amended to include these two parcels. So they will be governed by the same zoning and design criteria that governs Exarban Village. And in addition, the Exarban Future Trust will attach the same protective covenants that exist in Exarban Village to this site as well. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five and six are passed.
Thank you all.
Seven to zero. Items seven through nine are one case. Seven is ordinance to rezone property located northwest one hundred and sixty-eighth and West Dodge Road to mixed-use district. Property is also located within an existing ACI four PL area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is resolution to platent titled West Dodge Point. Lots two A, three A, four A, nine A, ten A, eleven A, and outlot C is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And nine is the amendment to the subdivision agreement with SID five thirty-eight is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items seven through nine are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. If you recall, this was kind of originally contemplated as far as the final plat of the West Dodge Point final plat. And this was the state right-of-way portion that was agreed to be finally platted later in the future based upon an interlocal agreement, an interlocal cooperation agreement between the SID, the state and the city. With that, I'm just happy to answer any questions. But that's why you see kind of the odd two A, three A, four A, nine A, and ten A lots. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Need approval?
Moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven through nine are passed. Seven to zero. Item number ten, resolution to revise preliminary plat entitled Ginger Creek Lots four through thirty-five and outlot A located southwest one hundred and sixty-third and Pinkney Streets along attached conditions. hereby accept. Preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number ten is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Ten is adopted. Seven to zero. Item eleven, resolution to revise preliminary plat entitled Blondo Ridges, formerly Bondo one eighty-six, located northeast of one hundred and eighty-ninth and Blondo Streets, attached here to and made a part here of is Exhibit A with the request for a waiver of the cul-de-sac length maximum along with attached conditions. hereby accept. The preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item eleven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven is adopted. Seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, agenda items number twelve through eighteen shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, agenda items number seventeen through twenty-four shall be laid over for two weeks. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, agenda items twenty-five through twenty-six shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number twenty-seven. Walgreens request permission to appoint Renee Snyder, manager of their stores at thirty-seven oh one North one hundred and thirty-second, ninety oh one Blondo Street, ninety oh one West Center Road, fifty thirty-eight Center Street, one hundred and seven twenty-five Fort Street, seventy-one fifty-one Cass Street, twenty-three twenty-three L Street, fifty sixty-two South one hundred and fifty-fifth Street, thirty oh one Dodge Street, twenty-six oh five South one hundred and seventy-first Street, one hundred and fifty-five twenty-five Spalding Street, forty-three ten Ames Avenue, thirty-one twenty-one South twenty-four Street, one hundred and thirty-one fifty-five West Center Road, eighty-nine eighty-nine West Dodge Road, two twenty-five North Saddle Creek Road, fifty-two twenty-five North Ninetieth Street, sixty oh five North Seventy-second Street, and one hundred and thirty-five ten Q Street, and twenty-nine twenty-nine South Sixtieth Street.
Public hearing on agenda items number twenty-seven A through S are today. Proponents, please.
She better be here.
Seeing none, are there any opponents?
She's here.
Public hearing is closed.
Have more questions?
Is she here?
No.
I think she's here.
No, this isn't Renee.
Oh, this isn't Renee, but I think this is Walgreens.
Oh, it's Wal-- okay.
Sorry, we didn't know what to do.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Desiree Menke, one fifty-two thirty Dayton Street.
Mark Nizvesky, one-two-one-one-nine Ohio Circle. You said you had a question. We were representing Renee. She couldn't be here today.
Where's her?
She is actually from outside of Lincoln. She's the district manager for a portion of Lincoln and a few of the outlying areas of the Lincoln area.
The rules of city council require that she be here. I don't know if you had a chance to review those. So I know probably a few of us have questions. So go ahead and lay it over for a meeting to allow her to be here.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Right. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call. Mr. Clerk, to lay over one week.
You can.
And continue the public hearing.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven laid over one week. Item number twenty-eight is American Italian Heritage Society request permission for a special designated license for a dance fundraiser in Beer Garden at fifty-one ten North one hundred and thirty-second Street on September fourth and September fifth and September sixth with music until twelve midnight each night.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Dr. Terry Boland Purdy, one-five-seven-one-three Woolworth. I'm the president of the American Italian Heritage.
I'm Wayne Moore, Omaha, Nebraska, sixty-eight thirty-two Mason Street. I'm the vice president of the American Italian Heritage Society.
Can you just hear to answer any questions we might have?
Yes.
I'll answer any question you have, yes.
Well, we have two people where you don't have to answer any questions, and probably the rest will follow.
Okay.
Yeah, will there be plenty of cannolis again, was the question.
I'll just leave a brochure. You can see what's on the menu. Yeah, we'll have a lot of food, a lot of entertainment, and we've done this for over thirty-one years. This is our thirty-first year. And now that we have our own home, we want to keep it going there, and it's a pretty successful. We feel that we're one of the best family community events in the city, and we like to keep going as we've done till midnight for this year and in the future.
I think Councilmember Milton assured us there'd be no rain this morning, so we should be all set.
We don't-- last year, well, I think every two hundred years, you'll get nine inches of rain in one week.
I think we had to get a garbage bag and put all the kids' shoes in the bag before we let them get in the car last year.
That was pretty bad. We don't want to hear about that again.
But you know what? We had fun anyway. So we did it again.
It was amazing. We were pretty successful with all that rain. I couldn't believe. A lot of people came, and boy, was it messy.
A lot of people, and they even have shuttles. So you can go park off at the parks and other places. So you don't have to walk. It's a great event. I would encourage everybody to go out there. Great food.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good. There's been a-- no further lights, and there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Okay. Roll call.
And Councilmember Thompson's left the chambers. Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-eight is approved. Six to zero.
I have one question. Do I have to do this every year? We do, since it's after eleven.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll drop this off for you.
Consent agenda. Any mayor or city councilman caused and I placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed as otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items number twenty-nine and thirty were held in July twenty-eight, twenty fifteen. Is there a motion?
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-nine thirty are passed. Six to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items number thirty-one through fifty are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name and address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-one through fifty are adopted. Six to zero. Ordinance on second reading. Item number seventy--
Item fifty-two.
Well, fifty-one. I've got to have that. Item fifty-two is--
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one. It's pursuant to City Council Rule seven F. Item fifty-one shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. We've done all the ones through sixty-seven. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda items sixty-eight through seventy-six shall be held on third reading. Item number seventy-seven, ordinance to approve a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with Icon Properties Midtown to implement the ones at thirty-fifth Dodge Tax Center Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the project located at one-eleven North Thirty-Fifth and thirty-four twelve, thirty-four twenty, thirty-four twenty-four Dodge Street. It's hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items number seventy-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Just here to answer any questions you may have, and I did not bring any visuals, so I apologize.
Thank you.
My name is John Kniglia. I'm the developer of the project. I did bring a picture, but I would have to dig through my briefcase to grab it. Wouldn't take but a minute.
If you wish to--
Although I'm here to answer any questions you would like to ask.
If you'd like to get the picture, you can.
Okay, I will.
Okay. We'll give you a minute. You said it wouldn't take but a minute. We're counting down now.
For waiting, if that's okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, what is the-- what's the total cost of the project investment?
A little over four-point-six million total investment, and the amount of the TIF is about five-hundred-and-ninety thousand. A little over five-hundred-and-ninety thousand.
And I see that we've got twenty-two stalls for parking, and it looks like underground parking. How many apartments will that be?
Twenty-four. Oh, excuse me. Twenty-eight total. So there's twenty-four that are one bedrooms and then four that are two bedrooms.
And are these market-rate apartments?
Oh, market rate.
Okay. Thank you. Are we killed enough time?
Yeah, we killed it. And you made it in under a minute.
Look at that. I'm impressed.
Okay, I'm not sure how to look this, but--
Just put it right there, and you're fine.
Flip it. There you go.
There we go. That would be the Dodge Street elevation.
We'll put you in front of the microphone if you would, please.
I'm sorry. That would be the Dodge Street elevation facing Dodge Street.
Okay.
And this is the elevation that faces the thirty-fifth Street. I'm sorry, the backside, which would be the north side of the building. These are the side elevations, the west and east side. So we're really looking forward to doing this project.
Thank you. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, Mr. Kniglia. I want to thank you for working through the process. This is the first significant redevelopment of this scale in that part of different park neighborhood associations' boundaries. I know they had originally had some concerns, and you were gracious enough to host a couple of meetings with the neighborhood, to expend additional funds, to have your architects redesign and to come up with a design that the neighborhood not only liked, but expressed their written support when you went to the zoning board of appeals. And that was added extra time, I'm sure, and expense. But I think you have a much better project and a product that the neighborhood would be proud of. And I want to thank the planning department because I've been pushing this idea that on mass transit corridors, as the BRT gets ready to come on, that we don't necessarily need in these locations right on what is to be a mass transit corridor, the one-to-one parking that we've had in other places. So you picked up on the parking stalls, but there's a bus stop right outside of this location, and it will be a BRT line. And this project's coming online in part because of all the good things that are going on in that area. So thank you.
I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-eight, ordinance to approve redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with Lanahan one thirty-eight Millard to implement the Millard lumber tax center financing redevelopment project plan for the site generally bounded by Millard Avenue on the northwest, south one hundred and thirty-fourth and south one hundred and thirty-second on the north, Q Street on the southeast, and south one hundred and thirty-fifth Street on the south, which proposes the construction of a modern mixed-use redevelopment consisting of approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-eight market-rate multifamily housing units, office, and retail space in surface parking.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon again. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Just here to answer any questions you may have, and I know the developer and his-- part of his team is here if there are any specific questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-nine, ordinance to approve and execute a contract with Silverstone Group for group benefit consulting services.
Public hearing on agenda number seventy-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Younger with the City of Omaha Human Resources Department, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this contract. And we also have a representative from Silverstone, Jeff Jorth, here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item eighty, ordinance to approve an acceptance and authorized distribution of the Nebraska Crime Commission Violent Prevention Grant to provide funding for one full-time intelligence analyst with the Omaha Public-- Omaha Police Department Gang Unit.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item eighty-one, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the Nebraska Crime Commission Juvenile Services Grant Award to provide funding for four youth service agencies.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item eighty-two, transit authority of the City of Omaha transmits the required forms for submitting their two thousand and sixteen budget documents.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion received. Please. Received and referred to finance, actually.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's received and referred to finance. Six to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda items number eighty-three through one oh five shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda items one oh six through one twelve shall be held on the second reading. Additional resolutions, item number one thirteen, one fourteen, and one fifteen are all appointments. We take one motion. Thirteen is resolution the appointment of Christopher Erickson to the Benson Business Improvement Area Board is confirmed. One fourteen is Brenda Dooley to the Downtown Business Improvement Area Board is confirmed. And one fifteen is the appointment of Rich Rosenblatt to be a member of the Downtown Business Improvement--
Public hearing on agenda items numbers one thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
One thirteen to fifteen are adopted. Six to zero.
Recede to seven P.M.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We recessed at two forty-four.
Is she here?
Payback.
Payback. Payback. I screwed it up anyway. Pave it. Pave it. I screwed it up anyway.